Ladies and gentlemen, seven o'clock. We call the July eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting in Warren County Planning Commission to Order. Our first item tonight is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I have...
Also, turn your microphones on.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion second. Motion second. All the favors that I, I am opposed, I say that we have our agenda. Next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes of June tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June tenth, two thousand and twenty.
I second that. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. I oppose. Our minutes has been adopted. Our next item is public presentations. Public presentations are limited issues that are not included on the meeting agenda. It's intended as an opportunity for the public to give input on relevant planning issues, not intended as a question and answer period. If anyone has anything they want to bring forward, please step forward, state your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Since no one will come forward, we'll move on to our public hearings. We have four tonight. First one, item two thousand and twenty oh six oh one, Robert and Colleen Heckman. A request for a conditional use permit for a private school. Property is located at sixteen forty-nine East Refuge Church Road and identified on Tax Math four as lot twenty-four eight. The property is owned agricultural and located in North River Magisterial District. Ms. Logan.
I'm down here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for a private school. They are requesting to open a private Montessori school at their residence located at sixteen ninety-four East Refuge Church Road. They are proposing to house the school in their detached four thousand four hundred square foot old barn on the property. They claim to have approximately sixty two hundred and five staff occupy that space. The ages of these students will range from three years to eighteen years of age. I have included a picture of the barn in your packet. The applicants have submitted letters of support from neighbors for this request. There is a statement of justification from the applicants in your packet with more detailed information. We do have comments from the health department, building inspections, and VDOT, which the applicants do have, and they are working with those agencies. The applicant has indicated that this facility would be for temporary basis until we found a more permanent location. The future land use plan does identify this period to be agricultural land uses, and a private school is permanent by the insurance of the conditional use permit. The zoning ordinance does require one parking space for five pupils plus one per employee in the parking area is proposed on the sketch that you have behind the barn. Staff recommends that if the planning commission are to recommend approval of this application, that the following conditions be applied. The applicant shall meet all VDOT, Warren County Health Department, Warren County Fire Marshal, and other applicable state federal regulations requirements. Maximum number of occupants shall not exceed eighty without meeting VDOT requirements for the entrance upgrades, as stated in their email dated June twelfth, two thousand and twenty. The applicant shall have the well under pressure annually and a copy of the results submitted to the planning department. Any signage and outdoor lighting fixtures shall be in compliance with the Warren County zoning ordinance. And the applicant shall submit a plan to the planning department showing the proposed parking area with the one space per five pupils and one per employee, and the new landscaping screen that may be needed, but it is shown to be behind the barn area. And the applicants, they are working with the county and the health department to determine an approved septic sewage disposal system, and they're working with VDOT on approving the site distance for their job. I can have any questions. The public hearing was properly advertised and all adjacent partners were in.
Thank you so much. You wanted to add anything before you opened up the public hearing. All right. The public hearing is now open. I will ask you how we have a lot of people here tonight. If someone is going to make a point, someone ahead of them make the point, please don't make the point again, just say that you agree with them, and we'll go from there. Our first applicant, first one tonight, signed up, Robert and Colleen Heckman.
Good evening. I really don't have anything, anything else to say, but I let Ms. Logan speak, so.
Thank you very much. Next one's my name, Christina Chapman.
We agree with them, so.
Please open our record, please step forward and state your name and address.
Sorry.
Christina Chapman, twenty-two Massey Street, Front Royal, and I just came in support of the Heckmans and their school, so I agree with her.
Thank you so much. David Blazer.
Good evening. We are neighbors from fifteen sixty East Refuge Church Road, and we do support our neighbors in their decision to educate their children.
Thank you. There's another, another person, last name Blazer, I'm... Mazzer.
I nearly didn't tell Mr. Chairman I completely understand. I do agree with everything she has said.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Jamie Blanchard.
Okay.
One five six, and I reside at Church Road. They are neighbors that we are connected with, and do agree with everything that the chairman said, that we do support them. They are wonderful teachers, and need education with our children, and it's a perfect opportunity for kids to be educated by these wonderful, wonderful people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all, and we have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that'd like to address this issue? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Kristin Lynn Cotton. My husband is Paul. I live on one three five Morris Lane, Front Royal. We also agree with this. We love, we're awesome teachers, and we create opportunity for these children.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Go in, go in. Public hearing is closed. Okay. Any comments?
Oh, I might have a question for the applicant, if that would be okay?
Absolutely.
Oh, I know that there, I've got a septic system installed myself, and I know that area is pretty tough for a septic system because of soil conditions. Oh, has anyone mentioned anything about a surface discharge system?
So, we had Marsh and Leggett come out and do the testing and everything else, and he said soil drip and everything else would not work. I'm assuming that's what you mean by surface discharge or soil drip or...
No, that's why I thought I'd mention it, because I knew that area would be really tough. Typically, when treated, you know, you get some kind of treatment to treat the sewage, and then it's dispersed into the ground and soaking the ground. The problem in that area is, is that the ground is not very good for soaking anything. Oh, a surface, it's a different set of rules for a surface discharge system to where the sewage is treated to the point that it's clean water, and you're nearly doing that for the other alternative systems anyway. Only thing it's adding to it is disinfection, but there is some other rules to it, and we don't do them very often, so I'm not completely clear with all the, with the quality of cake is all right. I know you gotta have so much room for that to run across your property for dinners to neighbors. They'd really like a flowing stream to discharge into, but if you get stuck on that, you may mention it to your soil people and ask the health department officials about it, because when I was reading through that thing, I was thinking, boy, he's gonna have a hard time getting a septic here, but don't give up, you know, exhaust all your options. They won't do a pumping home for a permanent structure. I went through that before for someone else, so check with that, because that's gonna be part of your conditions is to get this septic. If we approve it from here and send it forward, you'll still have to figure that piece of the puzzle out.
Yeah, and one of the things, since we're only planning to do this for eight months to a maximum of two years, it was in the thought process of renting limousine trailers and actually having a septic service pump that for us. So that's where we were originally going, and then as you're making it's way through the process, people kept sending permanent septic system, permanent well. So our thought was to actually have hot, cold water bottle units in the barn for drinking water and for washing hands, and then they would just use the limousine trailer for their waste, and then we would just pump that. That was the original thought, and then when people kept saying permanent, it's like, okay, now we gotta put a class two B well in, I'm gonna put a commercial or community septic system, you know, it's like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a temporary space, it just started...
Yeah, that's, that's pretty tough. I think, don't hold me to it, but I think the regulations, anything more than six months is not considered temporary.
Correct.
But maybe you could, you know, if it gets beyond that, maybe you can call Richmond or something and get some clarification or maybe some kind of waiver, being it's a school, I'm not sure what the rules, but it's an option, I was curious about.
So you said it's surface...
Surface discharge.
Discharge.
And maybe that...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Have you got anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a little concern about the Doubletree intersection with the East Refuge Street. The, there's not a whole lot of traffic right now on the East Refuge, and when you're coming down the hill of East or on Doubletree heading south, the road discharges you onto Refuge at an angle. The road curves and actually is coming downhill, and if you're old like me with a stiff neck, you really cannot see, and anytime I try to straighten out my car so I can, someone else behind me gets upset, so. That is a concern of mine, and I think that despite it, it is a fifty percent increase, but you're on top of five hundred cars, but your busy time is also going to be the busy time for people coming home from work. That intersection needs to be addressed.
So we had John Lewis with Paner Lewis as our engineer for the line of sight and for the VDOT entrance that has been submitted to VDOT, and we're waiting on permit approval. We also have permission from John Kenny, who's the landowner, and I think there is some in the right of way. We were actually going to clear out about twenty-five to thirty feet of tree line, so that opens up that intersection so you can actually see down Refuge Church Road.
It's also line of sight as you're, I drive a coupe, sports car, so it sits lower than an SUV. Now, SUV, you can see over that, but in a normal sized car, you can't, and that's a concern of mine there, especially at the angle that, because that road comes in at, I don't know, almost a four or five degree angle.
Yeah, and they also read the proposed second entrances for where this commercial entrance would be.
Right.
Would get us the six hundred and ten for VDOT requirements.
Oh, see, I'm not concerned about that.
But you're worried about how you kind of...
The traffic coming back out, us not being able to see them, especially if you're in a car. Us are in a car, SUV and pickup.
Yeah, and for the families that are enrolled, it's about, we'll have maybe twenty-five cars total, because our family's of four to six children. So this is where the five hundred trips a day added for me, so I know that code books have to be followed and everything else, but some of the confusing numbers that have been thrown out there are trips per day and everything else. We're gonna have about twenty-five vehicles a day, so that's a hundred trips per day in and out twice a day, FedEx and everything else, so maybe we're talking a hundred and fifty trips. So this is where five hundred trips added confuses me, maybe.
Well, no, current trips are three hundred and seventy-eight.
A septic toll.
They're adding you to one fifty, I think one fifty-seven is what you're gonna go with.
Okay, okay.
So you're basically a fifty percent increase on a, on a...
Yeah.
On a busy road to begin with, but it's just that intersection is kind of troublesome, and in the evening, there's a lot of people going to stop at that intersection, so I'm sorry, they just come down that hill.
I know, I slid to it yesterday, so yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I know, yeah, and that's the thing is, you know, that road being fifty-five, because it's an unmarked double yellow, was a concern of ours. We asked VDOT if they'd be willing to drop the speed limit on it, and, you know, to thirty-five, and they said, well, even if we drop the speed limit, it doesn't mean that people are gonna do it. And I said, well, then, Doublechurch Road, you've had four accidents in the last two years where they're going a hundred and forty miles an hour, does that mean you raise it to a hundred and forty just because people can do it? So it's like, that's, I know, but that's where it's like, you know, you try and ask for thirty-five miles an hour, and they basically said that they weren't willing to do it, so you're trying to slow the speed down that way too.
Anything else?
My question.
I do know that VDOT prefers ninety-degree intersections, so the recommendations, I don't know if they'll be coming back to something like that. Anything else? Anyone ready to make a motion there?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Considering that all the bones aren't worked out of this thing, the septic, VDOT's not got its approval back, you know, going forward, if we approve it here, just keep in mind that you'll have to keep working hard with these agencies to get your approval, because even with our approval, you've gotta meet these qualifications, VDOT, whatever they say, health department, and so on and so forth. So based on that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the planning commission forward this application to the board of supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Robert and Colleen Heckman for a private school with conditions recommended by staff.
There's a second. I'll second that. All those in favor, please say a five, say a aye. Aye. Opposed. I say that this will be forwarded to the board supervisor. Thank you very much. Our next item tonight, item two thousand and twenty oh seven oh one, Anthony Capper. Request for conditional use permit for short-term purchase rental. Property is located at four thirty-seven Jones Quadrangle Road in Shenandoah Farm subdivision, identified on Tax Math fifteen E, section six, lot six, as lots seven thirty-five and seven thirty-six. Property is owned residential one, R one, and located in the Shenandoah Magisterial District. Mr. Williams, you can go.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. Mr. Capper, just stating this, stating a justification that they've been visiting Front Royal and Skyline Drive in the Shenandoah National Park for a number of years, and decided to purchase this property to allow them to visit more often, and as they currently reside in Washington, D.C. The use as a short-term purchase rental would allow them to offset some of the costs in maintenance, mortgage, and property tax afterward in order to rent it on weekends and short periods of time, less than thirty days, when they aren't staying there. The dwelling was, has a construction permit, a recorded inspection by the health department from nineteen seventy-three for a two-bedroom dwelling with a four-person occupancy septic system. The health department has recommended that the well be tested for E. coli and E. coli form bacteria, and the septic system be inspected every three to five years. County has received an email from Shenandoah Farms' POA chairman, Mr. Ralph Fennal, stating that they do not have any issues with the use being approved for the property, since the CUP can be subject to relocation. The dwelling needs to set back requirements to any adjacent single-family dwelling of a hundred feet, as the closest dwelling is a hundred and twenty-five feet to the northwest. Mr. Childress, our Shenandoah Farms sanitary district manager, submitted comments to us regarding this use, and has no issues with the traffic associated with it, but did provide some recommendations for improving the site distance and drainage for the final entrance to the property. I've actually drafted an additional condition to address those recommendations. If the planning commission is to move this forward with their recommendation, that recommends the following conditions. The applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department regulations, the apartments, and maximum number of occupants shall not exceed four, as determined according to the department's operational permit for a two-bedroom dwelling. Condition two, the applicant shall have the well water tested annually for E. coli and E. coli form bacteria, and a copy of the results shall be submitted to the planning and health departments by the end of the calendar year. Number three, the applicant shall clear and remove vegetation along property frontage on both sides, and install a culvert at the entrance to the property within sixty days of approval by the board of supervisors. This public hearing has been properly advertised, adjacent property owners have been notified. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I've never met Mr. Capper, so if he's here and...
He's right here.
He's here to answer any also.
Any other questions before we get started? I will digress to what I should have done earlier. It is nice to have a meeting where that I see something besides my computer monitor. Glad you're here. With that, we will open the public hearing. We have one person who's signed up to speak, our Goldie Assam. Please come forward and...
Hello. I'm Richard Goldie, and I live on three thirty-one Eleanor Lane. So, first of all, this is a map of my property, and I know you can't see it from there, but it kind of makes a gentle boomerang shape. It goes from Eleanor Road over to Jones Quadrangle, and the house in question is right here. So, that had something to do with my coming down here. So I wrote a, I wrote a big statement, it's okay if I do this. As everybody knows, some property is considered commercial and some property is considered residential. Of course, there's good reason for this. Property that is used for commercial purposes, in pursuit of maximizing profits, is often not compatible with properties that are residential, in pursuit of a gentle...
Goldie, I can interrupt you a little bit under train of thought.
Sure.
The Virginia General Assembly has clearly written that short-term purchase rentals are not commercial.
Okay.
Just try to...
Okay.
Okay.
Should I go?
All right, I'll just, you know, just try to save you a little time when you part for it later.
Okay, well, I got all kinds of time. It's your time.
Yeah, but you, you're free to read, but just...
Okay, that's fine. I also questioned that hundred feet thing, that, that house is right in my backyard. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So if I pull this down?
Sure.
I'm six feet probably.
My name's Tony Capper, I'm the new, sorry, I need it still, the new owner of four thirty-seven Jones Quadrangle. I wish I could, you know, talk to Richard before he left, because I, you know, as Matt had said, we've been working closely together when I was trying to figure out this whole permit process. My wife and I have two little kids, we live just about DC, we love the area, we've been coming out here quite a bit. Our intention is not to start a real estate magnate out here, we're trying to rent a place and make some money when we're not using it, so we're... And I've met some of the neighbors already, I met John, Miss Ann Casey, I met Darryl across the street, like, I reached out to him, he's like, send him a letter. We're trying to, you know, be good neighbors, had a chance to talk to the POA president, Richard, seems like a nice guy, like, I think we're doing a lot of the right things, and we're trying to operate in a way that's not gonna be an issue for Richard or any other neighbor, really. You know, there are gonna be people that we don't know on the property, and I care about that probably more than anyone, and I wanna do whatever I can to make sure that, you know, our house is taken care of, and our stuff's taken care of, and of course it'll be ensuring we have clear rules, and we're trying to screen people so they don't, you know, damage our place, but also can cause an issue for the neighbors. So I think we're doing a lot of the right things to make this, you know, a good, to be a good part of the community, a part of the neighborhood, and hopefully not cause a nuisance for anybody. That's what we're trying to do, you know, it's as simple as that, and again, I'll go out of my way certainly to talk to Mr. Goldie to make sure that he understands us, the intention, and do whatever I can to make sure it doesn't interfere with his property. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Jamie Hammack, I live at four four two Jones Quadrangle Road, I actually live right across the street from the property. I'm totally against this, I think that it's gonna bring additional traffic, additional people, you have no idea who's coming up and down the roads. The roads already are supposed to be maintained by the sanitary district, and they're already in complete disarray. He hasn't discussed trash, he hasn't discussed anything. I'm the one who has to look at the house all, every day. I have to move back and forth work. The reason why I moved up to that property when I moved here in two thousand and nine was to be, to live in a place where you felt safe, where you felt that your kids could be outside. There's so many people who weren't notified about this that have kids that say you're riding up and down the street. He's talking about that he bought this property, but he hasn't addressed the fact that he didn't buy it as an individual. He bought it in the name of an LLC. He's talking about mortgage. He didn't get a mortgage for the property. I don't, I just, I think he totally got this property to be able to run a business. He has no intentions of staying up there and bringing his kids to visit. I haven't seen him, I haven't met him, he hasn't done anything. He sent the letters, people saying, I bought this to do this, but then when you look it up and you're finding that he did it as an LLC, he set up the LLC over a month ago, it's, I just don't think it's right.
Anyone else have any points to make? Anyone else come forward, the public hearing is closed. Okay.
Question for the heckman?
Yes, sir.
Could you come back and answer the question, please? I was looking through your conditions, if this would go forward, what is your stance on meeting Mr. Childress's requirements? Do you have any issue with that, is okay, put the call to him, clear the brush, make some ready?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good, good recommendations. We already did, there were some issues with the septic, the discharge line, we need to get replaced, we spent a few thousand dollars replacing all of those already. You've tested the water and the E. coli, and that's all good to go. The brush, we've already, you know, we have, since we're not gonna be there all the time, we've already hired someone to mow the lawn, make sure that's all good to go, and so pressure removal, I'm sure we could add to that. The culvert, you know, Matt and I hadn't talked about, but that, I haven't thought about it, but that sounds reasonable, I don't have an issue with that.
That is one with me, I had a question on, on the culvert, has anyone talked about the diameter of it, because those go anywhere from twelve inch to a hundred and twenty inch.
Maybe Mr. Childress could...
Maybe he could go out and do some, check some drainage pool efficiency and determine that.
We can talk to him about that. Currently, it's just a small drainage swell that they go over, so whatever the minimum required that they would need, we can get that information from Mr. Childress or his staff.
That's a pretty flat area right there, going into your...
Yeah, I, I didn't notice it, and there is a small ditch that's on either side.
But you're not on, right?
No, not at the entrance.
I do have a question, where do you live now?
Chevy Chase, Maryland.
And where?
In Chevy Chase, Maryland, just out of DC.
And do you have a property management plan for, you have some...
Yeah, yeah, so, there's something that Matt and I talked about, so I've hired a woman, Pam Williams, she's been cleaning houses, and she's been in this industry for thirty-five years, she's usually experienced, came highly recommended, so she's gonna be my person, she lives right in downtown Front Royal, who's, you know, she can be there in fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, I guess, given it's a little bit further, so she's my point person. And, you know, my plan is to follow the, you know, the letter of the law, what expectation around what that time needs to be, ensure we've got the health inspection details and whatnot in place.
Just for your, I've lived in Shenandoah Farms for twenty-five years, and we've had much greater problems with vacant properties that sit empty...
We already did, there were some issues with the septic, the discharge line need to get replaced. We spent a few thousand dollars replacing all of those already. We've tested the water and the E. coli, and that's all good to go. The brush, we've already, you know, we have, since we're not going to be there all the time, we've already hired someone to mow the lawn, make sure that's all good to go. And so, pressure removal, I'm sure we could add to that. The culvert, you know, Matt and I hadn't talked about, but I haven't thought about it, but that sounds reasonable. I don't have an issue with that.
That is one with me. I had a question on the culvert. Has anyone talked about the diameter of it? Because those go anywhere from twelve-inch to 120-inch.
Maybe Mr. Childers could...
Maybe he could go out and do some, check some drainage pool efficiency and determine that. We can talk to him about that. Currently, it's just a small drainage swell that they go over, so whatever the minimum required that they would be, we can get that information from Mr. Childers. All right.
That's a pretty flat area right there going into your...
Yeah, I didn't notice it. There is a small ditch that's on either side.
But you're not on the ground.
No, not at the entrance.
I do have a question. Where do you live now?
Chevy Chase, Maryland.
And where?
In Chevy Chase, Maryland.
Maryland. And do you have a property management plan for, you have some...
Yeah, yeah. There's something that Matt and I talked about. So, I've hired a woman, Pam Williams. She's been cleaning houses, and she's been in this industry for thirty-five years. She's usually experienced, came highly recommended. So, she's going to be my person. She lives right in downtown Front Row. Who's, you know, she can be there in fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, I guess, given it's a little bit further. So, she's my point person. And, you know, my plan is to follow the letter of the law, what expectation, or what that pine needs to be, ensure we've got the health inspection details and whatnot in place.
Just for your, I've lived in Shenandoah Farms for twenty-five years, and we've had much greater problems with vacant properties that sit empty than properties that are being taken care of, so, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate you saying that, exactly. We're putting a lot of work into that place. We want it to be a place we can enjoy. I hope we get a chance to chat afterwards, because we're trying to really be good neighbors. It's unfortunate that we haven't had a chance to meet yet, because, yeah, we want it to be a good place. Things are getting done to that home that probably haven't been done in thirty years. The one bought from Sally, she's a nice lady, but she's lived there for thirty years. It was an old home that needed work, and we're putting the work into it. So, if anything, I think we're helping the area in making that home better, and we intend to use it. So, I, and again, I view this as a permit where, of course, I sort of feel responsible to make sure that things are going to be okay. If there is an issue, like you would with any neighbor, right, you nip it in the bud, and it's...
It's not okay you're not going to rent it.
What's that?
I said it's not okay you're not going to rent it.
Exactly. It's conditional. So, that's, I guess, how I think about it.
Couple of points we usually make in these things is, this is a conditional use permit, and if you don't meet the conditions of the permit at all times, the permit can't be withdrawn. And another one, one of Mr. Henry's points, I totally agree with. I know you'll venture tenants, this type of thing, but if you do happen to get a bad one, it'd be there maybe for a weekend. If you've got a long-term renter that's a bad one, you're going to be there a lot longer than a weekend.
Again, like the point I made earlier, I don't want a bad tenant as anybody else. I don't want my stuff broken or things messed up in the house. And, you know, my goal is, if that were to happen, you know, they're, to your point, short-term, if they're out, they're out that day, if they're causing issues, like, that's it. But I have a problem being strict with people who aren't being good tenants, good neighbors.
All right. I got anything else for applicant?
Yes. On a map that we're showing here, it appears that your house owns a border or is, we're going on your property line?
No, it's about, no, I don't think so. It's maybe fifty feet back from the road and from the, from Richard's property.
Side yard to your neighbor.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. So, the lots, if you're facing the road from the property to the left, there is another lot that is part of this, so that's all the wood, and that's mine, is two lots together. The lot behind, that's Richard Goldie's that wraps around, that's probably thirty, forty feet to his line, I think. And then to the right, again, if you're facing the road from the house, that's John, I forget his last name, his property. His house is certainly, I don't know, it's far. I don't know what the property lines exactly. Maybe the property line's thirty feet, but the house is, I mean, a hundred feet. I'm trying to remember exactly, but it...
Do you guys share a common parking lot, parking area, driveway?
No.
Okay.
That's what it's, that's the wood that...
Well, that's what I'm looking at here. It appears to be that way that it's on.
I'll just mention, we measure dwelling to dwelling. That's what the code requires, and we try and make it accurate as a measurement as we can with the GIS system. That's what, there's a measuring tool. So, I think I came off with a hundred and twenty-five feet.
The brush that we were talking about earlier, it's actually between my property and Jones on the right, so that's, that's what's blocking the two driveways right now.
Yeah, okay. I got anything else? Thank you. I would encourage you and your neighbor both that no matter how this thing eventually turns out, you're still going to be around each other for a long time, so at least try to extend an olive branch and try to have a little bit of neighborhood harmony, please.
Well, this may sound, I'm sorry, I'm not a very efficient speaker, but this may sound a bit...
You're good company.
The neighbors did have some concerns. Typically, he's right, some of these properties get, they look really bad, they're not very well taken care of, that they're not rented. I wish that gentleman hadn't left so we could give him some more explanation, but our legislative body for the state has ruled that short-term tourist rental is not commercial, because they're simply just living in the house. And people ask about traffic and a few things. A short-term tourist rental is obviously not going to rent three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. A long-term rental actually has more traffic than a short-term tourist rental. You know, during the winter months, it's probably not going to rent, so it's going to be a seasonal thing. And we've actually had pretty good success with these, because the management plan, in other words, you get a long-term rental in there, it'd be the same thing as if you lived there in yourself, and if you chose to be a bad neighbor, or that long-term rental person did, there's very little that we can do to stop that or punish them, because it's about right. But under these conditions, if there are two left, or if they're leaving, you know, he has to pick the trash up, maintain the property, not just so he can rent it, but because it's in his rules. And if any time these rules are not complied, I would urge the neighbors to notify staff and they'll react accordingly. You know, if it, you know, a couple of things that I had for staff is four, so this isn't a rural area. Are we marking in his conditions? Does he have to mark his boundaries and all that kind of thing? Pretty standard.
Yeah, that's part of the supplemental regulations, is that they identify the boundaries to their guests, so that they do not trespass over them. In this particular case, he has two lots, so it would just be the boundary to his neighbor, one vacant lot and the other boundary. And we try and get all that information and that done during the post-process prior to issuing the certificate of zoning for the actual business. So, yeah, we notify them, and we try, and, you know, they can do it with a sign, they can do it with stakes, you know, and typically, that's also mentioned in their property management plan, you know, to identify that they've been identified, and you will be trespassing if you go to stay within the property bounds. We try and work with them, especially in the property management plan, because that's provided to their guests.
Got it. Thank you for the question.
Sure.
The other thing, it's not in the conditions, but it's hard to tell by the pictures, but the one house that is the closest, I don't think it's worth putting in a condition, but if these two houses, and I regret not visiting the site on this one, because I didn't think it was going to be an issue, but if the two houses that are closest together, if they are in direct view of each other, it may be a neighborly gesture to do some screening. You know, if you did a few legalens or something in there, that would also extend that privacy to the permanent resident. I don't think I'm going to try to edit this as a condition, you know, unless somebody else really felt strongly about it, and I don't know, can you, Matt, did you go out there? Can you see the two closest houses? Are they lining a sight to each other?
Joe posted the property, so Joe would like be the person.
Sorry, Dan.
I did post the property when I visited. The houses across the street are not really direct line of sight, and then it was very wooded on both sides of his property to the side property line that it's set back pretty far. I didn't go on the property to the extent of what's behind, and if there's any, you can see any homes behind it. But it is semi-private from everyone, even the houses across the street does have some landscaping, but, you know, that would be, I don't know if a condition, but a good recommendation for him to talk to those neighbors, and if you're in the home and you can see, maybe look at the one, some type of landscape screen.
Yeah, it looks wooded in the picture, but...
But the road is narrow and is, which kind of condenses the neighborhood a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? As a reminder, I will, I don't know if you know, that our vote tonight is a recommendation to the board of supervisors, and they'll have a file to say.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Let's see here. Move that the planning commission forward this application to the board of supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit of anti-campit for a short-term tourist rental with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say it. But I was saying, I opposed. I was having it be forwarded to the board supervisors. Our third public hearing tonight. Two thousand twenty dash oh seven dash oh two, Robert Hensley, request for additional conditional use permit for private use camping. Property is located in Rivermont Acres Road and identified on Tax Map nineteen F as section one as lot sixty-eight. Property is owned residential R1, located in the Fort Magisterial District. Mr. Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hensley is seeking a conditional use permit for private use camping. It is a vacant lot in Rivermont Acres and located in the special flood hazard area. The Hensleys have owned this property, the family, for many years, and they've used it for camping previously. They use it for outdoor recreation, and this Hensley came in to build inspections to apply for an electrical permit, to reconnect the existing electrical. And at that time, we notified him that a conditional use permit is required in the R1 for private use camping. He came down from Maryland the next day and got his application, and has been, you know, great to work with since then. This CP would allow him to park up to two recreational vehicles on the lot for a continuous one-hundred-and-eighty consecutive days, of which you, you know, have to shuffle them around and bring them back. Last month, the question did come up that the current owner is Ralph Hensley, and this is a Robert, it is owned by multiple brothers, and again, it's family-owned property. There are three conditions. They are standard conditions for private use camping that we've recommended. The applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements as stated in their comment letter. I gave it to you today. It wasn't in your packets. We received that on July sixth. The materials, number two, materials associated with the campers are to be stored in a neat and orderly fashion during the time of use and are to be removed from the site when not in use. Or, again, kind of here that one-hundred-and-eighty days. We also require you to make sure that they have a plan in place if there is a flood event. And then the applicant, number three, the applicant shall post the property with a parcel number for fire, emergency, and rescue services, and have an egress plan, again, for the removal of the recreational vehicles and portable commode prior to a flood event. And related to the health department comments, there was a septic system installed, permit in nineteen sixty-seven. They do use a portable restroom. When I was there posting the property, they were actually servicing that restroom while I was there. Mr. Hensley stated that they get pumped regularly about once a week, or after they use it for the weekend, and that they do bring in, you know, water and stuff. So, the applicant is here this evening. It had, joining property owners have been notified. We did find out that this is an HOA area. We reached out to the homeowner down there. There's one or two permanent residents in Rivermont Acres. We haven't heard anything back, but Mr. Hensley did speak to the HOA president as they had a meeting this week, and there were no comments sent from them. And again, we posted that, and it's been passed. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it. Again, Mr. Hensley is here if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. Questions forward again? Okay, this public hearing is open, and the only person who signed is she, was Robert Hensley.
I don't think he had. I think he had any questions. He just signed up.
Okay, all right. Okay. If we have, we have some questions, we'll call you. Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed.
This is a mine that could, I've been down in here a few times, and there were some houses in there as I was a little kid, and actually, I think they suffered some contamination from the afters, and maybe it's not suitable for permanent residents. It's very little reusable land there. There's, to the left of the road, it's very steep, and it's actually perfect campsite. I mean, it's, it is the right place for a campsite.
All right. Okay. Care to make a motion, though? Thank you.
I move that the planning commission forward this application to the board of supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Ralph Hensley at Al's for private use camping with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Both of you members get in. That's a good thing to see. All those in favor, please say if I was saying, "Aye."
Aye.
Oppose? I was having it be forwarded on to the board supervisors. Our last public hearing tonight, item two thousand twenty oh seven oh three, Aaron Hyke, request for conditional use permit for private use camping. Property is located on Beckwith Drive and identified on Tax Map twenty-one B, section one, block one, as lot U. Property is owned residential R1, is located in the Shenandoah Magisterial District. Mr. Wedling, again?
Yes, Mr. Hyke has purchased his property last year. He intended to use it for river, for the river access, voting recreational purposes. He's pulled a permit for electrical and has an existing, I'll call it a shed, it's a cinder block shed. He'd like to be able to use that shed for storage of recreational and maintenance equipment, be able to pull a building permit and go to repair it. It's got some significant roof damage and whatnot. He would be allowed to park two recreational vehicles. The campers own a lot for one-hundred-and-eighty consecutive calendar days, but there's very, very limited space right now. He has some picnic tables, a little fire pit there and whatnot, so he may be able to get one vehicle in there. Let's see. He also, yeah, I'll just mention this, he bought the lot behind it, and he intends to actually build a house on that lot at some point in time, and he may come through for a short-term tourist rental for that house, or just use it for his payment or whatever. But I just thought I'd mention that to you. The applicant currently has a conditional use permit for private use camping, which was transferred to his name for a property that's down on Farms River View Road. He bought it a few years ago. County did recently receive a complaint that he had exceeded the recreational vehicles allowed by the permit. This was prior to the, for the July weekend, and we received a complaint, there was five recreational vehicles with a lot. He was notified by Mr. Petty that he was in violation on July second, and his property would need to be brought into compliance, where he could risk revocation of that permit. And he requested to have that property in compliance prior to this public hearing. This Hyke followed up yesterday with an email that the property had been taken care of and explained it was his in-laws who were staying down one property for that time period, and he's currently building them a house. But he has, you know, according to his email, everything was taken care of. County staff, we will schedule a follow-up site visit to the property prior to the board supervisors meeting and public hearing next month, verify that his other properties in compliance. Tonight, at the staff, we are recommending following conditions for this property. If the planning commission is moving this forward to the board, these, again, are standard conditions. Number one, the applicant shall comply with Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements as stated in their comment letter. Number two, materials associated with the campers are to be stored in a neat and orderly fashion during the time of use and are to be removed from the site when not used. And number three, the applicant shall post the property with his lot or parcel number for fire, emergency, rescue services, and have an emergency egress plan for removal of the recreational vehicles and portable commode prior to a predicted flood event. Public hearing has been properly advertised, and adjacent property owners have been notified. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any concerns before we open the public hearing? Public hearing is open, and no one signed up on this side sheet.
Actually, we have one neighbor. I don't know if I say this.
I was going to say, if anyone wants to speak.
Would you like to speak?
Anyone wants to speak, they can.
I thought it said that. Okay.
All right. Sitting all the way come forward, and after being invited, the public hearing is back away.
Pretty standard stuff.
Pretty standard stuff, yeah.
Take a motion?
Absolutely.
Move that the planning commission forward this application to the board of supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Aaron Hyke for private use camping with the conditions as recommended... Move that the Planning Commission forward this application to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Aaron Hyke for private use camping with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second? I second, second, okay. All those in favor, please signify. If I was saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes have it, this will be forwarded on to the Board of Supervisors. We have one authorization to advertise tonight. That's it for public hearings. Item twenty twenty oh seven oh four, Mario and Wendy Lauterman. Request for a conditional use permit for short-term tourist rental. Property is located at two hundred Valley Retreat Road in Canhandle Valley Retreat subdivision. Identified on Tax Map twenty-six C, section one, as lot fourteen A. Zoned residential R one located in the Fort Magisterial District. Mr. Wendler, again?
Yeah, I'll just add, I'm gonna take this off if you don't mind. I'll just add that this property is in flood zone A. One percent annual chance of flooding. We're willing, you know, there's a hundred-year flood plane. It is an elevated structure. Built to code recently. When the property owner purchased the property, he did, previous property owner did bring the accessory structures into compliance with flood vents. They purchased property as a second home. They plan to use it as a second residence and they will be the acting property manager of the short-term tourist rental. But they do have a local contact that they have, will be able to utilize for emergencies. The dwelling has a three-bedroom septic system with an approved occupancy of six persons, four hundred fifty gallon per day limit. Property is located in a subdivision, but doesn't have restrictive covenants. And, but it is a gated community and the road is informally maintained by members of the subdivision. Previous property owner owning this lot typically spearheaded that. Road maintenance, so I'm not sure who will be doing that, but property, the dwelling does meet the required supplemental setback of a hundred feet from dwelling to adjacent dwelling. Since the closest neighbor is a hundred fifty feet to the northeast. And a property management plan again will be required if the use is approved by the Board of Supervisors and prior to issuance of the zoning permit and business license. This property had not had any previous conditional use permits issued for it for R one zoning. There are no zoning violations, but the property was issued a variance in October two thousand nineteen. For a number of the accessory structures on the property, less than one acre in size and for a front yard setback of nineteen feet for a carport and move of the required fifty feet. The carport was built without permits. The, the two sheds have been retrofitted with flood vents in order to be compliant with the requirements for the special flood hazard area in Everly District and the carport was then permitted. And brought into compliance and respected and it's, it's fine now. The applicant has talked to a few of the neighbors prior to the application being submitted and will need to address any concerns relating to the security gate. He has proposed adding a combination lock that could be changed after each guest has visited the property. Again, we'll probably just keep the standard conditions for the short-term tourist rentals. I won't read them tonight since this is not a public hearing. The applicant is here. He'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So much.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything at this time.
Anybody else got anything? Take a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Move that the Planning Commission authorized or proposed conditional use permit request for advertisement for a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Oppose? The answer is. Should see you next month. For those, the next thing, mission matters. First one's proposed agricultural and forestal districts review schedule, Rockland, South River, and Lime. Ms. Lovey?
In your packet, I included a proposed schedule for the review of the Rockland, South River, and Lime and Agricultural and Forestal Districts. I'd like to get them reviewed by the end of this year and all approved. They do continue on, but I would like to see who all would like to join and who all would like to, if anyone wants to withdraw from, from the districts. And we're going through right now and figuring out over the past ten years, when it was last renewed. We're looking at all the parcels that have, maybe have new owners. They might not even know they're in the district. And figuring out which properties have been subided by new owners and so that's what staff has been working on. But first it will go to the Board of Supervisors and they will bump it down to the Planning Commission and our Agricultural and Forestal District Committee. And then the Planning Commission and the Agricultural and Forestal District Committee will work together over the next several months to hold joint meeting together. And then we'll get information out to the various districts and property owners as to who might want to join. Usually not many people withdraw unless they have, you know, certain reasons to do so. Sometimes they request within that ten-year period to withdraw, so. That's about all. We're working on our maps right now, so we'll have all that when it comes to you and there's an ordinance for each district because in each district, there are different requirements that the district has decided on themselves, the Rockland area, so. It really, I should always say, it's really, I always feel like the district is a statement that they want their area to remain ruled in character. So that's probably the biggest thing with the districts. And then there are some certain regulations that any rezonations that would occur within the districts have to go through additional scrutiny because they aren't part of that, so. But I will state to you all on that when it comes to you. This is just the proposed schedule, so I hope to have it on the Board of Supervisors' agenda on next, on the twenty-first of this month. But then off, done to you all to start the review.
Alright.
I'm assuming the August through October dates that you have here are regular planning. We should be united.
They are. I did put a note and the last time we did the districts, I would go, I held meetings at all the fire departments and in the districts and. So there will be more meetings, but you don't need to be there. Yours will be on the dates. Unless we need to have an additional like joint meeting with the Agricultural and Forestal District Committee, but right now I have them calling. I'll be a regular meeting.
Alright. Okay. Anybody? I guess anybody sympathetic to that? Sounds good to me. Okay, commission member concerns. Scott, you got anything over the past three months?
Nope, just started my class, so got the first two days out.
Very good. Very good. I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I had one I was going to say about, seemed like since January, you made almost every motion and then you guys. Thank you so much. Who are you?
It's hard to do it every time, so I was trying to keep, keep her speed, so it didn't, I hate to find me.
Anything else on the eight phone meetings?
I do. I do. I would like to share my experience. I was awarded the contract to install a septic system in our new fire department, which I did support at the Planning Commission level. Oh, it is a beautiful building. Oh, it's almost too pretty. If I, if I had to be critical that way, might be a little over-engineered, but it is a, it is a very nice structure. The guys at H and W have been super to work with. Have met several other subcontractors where we had overlap on the job site. Those guys are pretty good, but. We do have a problem out there, a severe one. We've got one county employee that is really stinking works up. It's to the point that I'm almost ashamed to be associated with it, it's that bad. Some of the other people that I work with on the job site share my opinion, but I have not talked to them, so I will not release their names. But the employee in question is Jeff Hayes. And what I'm about to say is not very nice, but it is not a personal attack on Mr. Hayes, because I do not know Mr. Hayes personally. I've never been to any functions or been to his house or he been to mine. It's just strictly working relationship. He has a tendency to antagonize between the subcontractors and the contractors and he antagonizes the contractor. He asked some valid questions, a few about my septic system for somebody that didn't have background in septic that were acceptable questions. But he did stand there and talk to me for thirty minutes about all the problems that H and W had. But then he released, but then he, he never asked me anything about the questions he had about the septic and he took those to H and W. And I had thought, well, you know, technically he should go to the general first, but he doesn't operate that anyway. That way either because he had no problem telling me about all the other problems on the job. And so the point is something fresh. I doubt that you'll ever see H and W Construction come back to Warren County again. I'd be lucky if they make any money on the job. Some of his requirements and restrictions, he had his job shut down for two months for the Sealy thing and they, they ended up doing exactly what the supplier, the subcontractor and the general contractor recommended. He's got my job shut down for an indefinite amount of time. The engineer that has designed the system has been in business for, it's racy engineering, it's public knowledge, so I won't be scared to mention their name. I've been working for them for twenty years. I've been doing septic systems. I'm a second generation. I've put septic systems in since before I've had a driver's license. And I don't mind, I've had a few failed inspections. Last inspection that I had failed, Walter Bailey did it in early nineties and I haven't had a system fail since then. And I don't mind answering some questions. If he wants some data in the back, some stuff up, he started with three questions. I heard it's up in the mid-teens now and I think the only reason why we got more questions is because he didn't like the way that the first three questions ran. He's wrong about some issues. He's attacked some of the other subcontractors. I have talked to them. There again, I won't mention their names because they're scared of retaliation for Mr. Hayes. But they have said that they'll, if H and W might come back, but they're not. There's also been some contractors that worked on previous projects in our county that were invited in to do some of the subcontracting work. There again, I won't mention their names. But they actually knew a hit attack and refused to bid anything for H and W on this project. Oh, I probably will, and in previous years with Mr. Hayes, when he was at building inspection, I did run him off of one of my job sites and so has multiple other contractors. And I thought maybe he wasn't cut out for building inspection or maybe he didn't get enough training. And I didn't realize that he was a problem over on the commercial sector. I know he's supposed to be the watchdog for the county, make sure we're getting what we're paid for. But there is a right and a wrong way to do things and when you can be, create a combative environment on the job site, nothing productive is getting done. Nothing. Everybody is just trying to get through this and get the hell out of here because they're literally the attitude on getting on the job. I, I do have a group of contractors. I haven't said anything to H and W or any of the subcontractors on that job. I'll probably be at the next board meeting for public comments. And I'll probably mention this again and there'll probably be, I know there are a couple contractors said if they didn't have a scheduling contract, they would be glad to share their experiences with Mr. Hayes. I hated to be the bearer of bad news for that on what would normally be a good evening, but it's beyond me and Jeff. Just pretending I'm not even doing the septic to think that the general contractors and the old subcontractors, we only got two bids on that fire department. And the reason why we only got two bids is because we're, we're not good to work with. They're building a similar structure in Prince William County. Of course, I know it's a higher money bracket and there's more contractors in that area, but they got eleven on a similar structure and we can only get two. And if H and W pull out, do you just give everything to Lance? I mean, that's, I mean, you gotta at least get two prices. We're not getting any competitiveness in this area to keep our pricing down. And it's all because of one man. And I, and I'm very, I'm ashamed, completely ashamed of the whole operation. I know the county's going through some big changes with staff. I heard about that today and I'm, I'm sorry that we got to go through that, but hopefully moving forward, things will be better and then I will be at the board meeting on the twenty-first to, with some more details on my experience with H and W Construction. Thanks for listening, everybody.
Thank you. You want to follow up, Lechow?
I've been working through my honeydew list and I've got one of those as well, so.
Okay. Good. Anything, anything?
Well, just a multi-headed building at Rivermont Commons, if you haven't drove by out there lately. That's coming along and I approved the Five Guys permit for the zoning permit this week. So they are on one end of the building and then the other end is the Jopolt later after and they've submitted their signs. I hope to get those approved this week. And then there's a space in between those two restaurants. It's a probably a small retail space. It's not a huge space, but we don't have anything in for that yet. That's moving along and then the Ecliss Warehouse, they're still addressing all the agency comments. They got quite a few comments from DEQ. But hopefully they're getting ready to resumet. They told me today, so. So that's moving, still moving along.
Okay. Anything, Kate?
I do not have anything to report.
Thank you. Joe?
I did just want to give kind of a zoning update, given everything that's going on with COVID and pandemic. We're still getting a lot of permits in, contractors staying busy, so, which is good and we're glad they're still out there working. I think a lot of people are using this time to get through their honeydew lists, a lot of decks, a lot of swimming pools going in. I did also want to address, we, Planning Commission member mentioned the Bentonville CSX intersection. There was some trash and debris that had been accumulating at that location. We have reached out to them. If you've noticed, there's a lot of railroad ties along the railroad right now, so they're doing a lot of track maintenance. And since that time, there's also been a derailment in the community, which has probably derailed their plans in a point of tension about that. So they are, so we're working with them to make sure they get that cleaned up, but last month I thought that they were actually working at that specific location on some of the railroad ties, so we are actively pursuing that. And we've also been working still through complaints and violations through this time, you know, giving a little bit more leniency, I would say, for some people who are in violation. Because everybody kind of has a different circumstance at this point, but hopefully as we start to come out of that, we can ramp up, you know, any type of enforcement or remediation for some of that. If you have any questions for us.
Do you have a question for you? On the way in, the, the Happy Creek, I mean, the, yeah, Happy Creek Road at the railroad crossing right before the middle school there was closed. Is that going to be closed all night? Do you know?
So it's interesting, Mr. Wendler, I actually went to go out this afternoon and was stopped by that. I, I was just made aware of that this afternoon. I mean, we'll be happy to take a look. I know our.
I just wondered to know if I could get home there.
Yeah, I don't, I, I wish I knew the answer to that. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, Facebook might, might help you on that one. Any other questions?
Mr. Wendler?
Yeah, just one item. I completed our annual update to do the community profile this past week. And I think Emily was going to have that posted on the website. What we can do is get your copies at the next meeting and also I'm working on a, it's a long form, form community profile with some additional demographics and economics information. If you're interested, we can put that in your packets next month. I'll open that. I should be able to finish that in the next couple of weeks or so. So some interesting stuff to look at before we get into the comp plan review later this year when we get to it. So, you know, it's just kind of abbreviated information of a lot of that we'll be seeing later.
Okay. Thank you very much. I got anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconds.
Thank you very much.